We're live now.
Okay.
All right.
Good.
We figured it out.
All right. Sorry for the delay, folks, but technology is a wonderful thing. We called meeting to order and said, please, agents.
I call the agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
I still have Mike Nicole to bear with me. Commission review and update. I know that Crystal wanted to come over and introduce some new hires we have, so whenever that is.
She should be over there.
Yeah, she should be over there. She said at 10.
Well, she usually watches, so we'll go ahead and start.
Well, I didn't have much. I did a radio spot with our new childcare coalition director, Amy Garner, just to talk about the goals and stuff that we have and supporting the current providers as well as looking to entice more people to get involved to address the issue that we have of only supporting 24% of the need of our childcare. So, and then I was feeling under the weather, so I missed both the MAC breakfast and the conservation meeting, so that was it.
Anything for you? I don't even.
No, I did attend class on that Wednesday and Thursday a couple weeks ago, which was, I think, very beneficial, actually, you know, to connect with others and everything else. Yes, I did appreciate attending that, and I think it was very beneficial.
You learned anything?
I liked the budget and the budget and finance part of it. Some of the other stuff, stuff that would probably, you know, I'd already heard, but...
He had a good panel for the, in the rearview mirror, the four. I knew three of them, and they were all really good commissioners, so he had a good panel for that.
I've often thought about going back for a refresh. As far as myself, I reached out to J Hall, KAC, about the three mile zone. Yeah, I, some counties wire it, and majority counties don't. Their goal is, is to try, there's a hearing Thursday at 9:30, and prior to that, they're trying to get an interim committee, that's what their goal is, KAC's, to get an interim committee to look at that, to give more input and test. Anyway, I also asked him, and I want to ask Travis today, at the Department of Maine, there is a bill, I think it's Senate Bill 10, that would do away, exempt off-road vehicles, ATVs, watercraft, trailers, and from what I read, I mean, it could, for certain counties, it could be detrimental for revenue stream of the counties. He said that some counties said they spend more money, you know, assessing those than they do collecting.
What bill number was that?
Senate Bill 10. And they changed back and up on the three mile, the House bill now, and maybe you guys all got it from Ezra, but it's now 2025, the same number on the House bill.
Yeah. That's the three mile thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you see the update from Mike that, you know, he sends out that legislative thing? Because he put on there about eliminating that three mile zone without more discussion and study could result in unintended consequences, so it definitely needs to be talked about. But it also says that the cooperation between the county and city need to be, is imperative on that.
Well, this would repeal, right now, it's in effect. These bills would repeal it, so, you know, cities wouldn't have that right to go out.
Yeah.
So, um, so that, I'm both, and I called Chris Ann. She was under the weather last week, but I called her to see if she would compose a letter for us to sign for community corrections.
Sure.
And if she could have several letters for us, including our local legislators. And she said, absolutely. So, I don't know when she'll get that to us, but anyway, I didn't bother too much because it was pretty obvious, like, she'd eat too, but wasn't feeling well. And yes, I attended MAC breakfast. I thought it was really good. First time ever being at JC NAS. They did a really good job of hosting it. I mean, really good job. Good turnout. First out of this, they gave all the impact, environment, economic impact that Fort Riley has based off of 2024, and kind of a breakdown of how many, how many miles out people live or work at Fort Riley, and, I mean, as far west as Slink County. So, yeah, it was, it was interesting, and got to sit with Dewey Terrell and some Fort Riley people and Kansas Forks people, so we had, we had a good table. And then that evening, attended the Soul Conservation Dinner, and that was really nice. I was very appreciative that they recognized our wildfire department for our, all of our work with these wildfires. And then got a call from HR Department to recognize our public works on Friday morning with donuts. So, I went down, met Tiffany down there. She had the donuts, and so said some words to them, thanking them for all the hard work. Hopefully, we never see a snowstorm like that again, but that was a great idea, and I think it was well appreciated.
And I will give credit where credit is due. That was Tiffany and Kalen talking, and they said, wouldn't this be great if? And I said, let's make it happen. So, they, they got together, and I don't know if he wants kudos for it or not, but the donuts were paid for by Tiffany and Travis.
No.
Little, how do you phrase it?
Dennis. I thought it was Dennis. Was it Travis?
She told me Travis.
Oh, okay. I thought she told me Dennis, who used to work, coming out of retirement. I don't know. Okay.
I'll ask for clarification, but I think this one she said was Travis.
But no, it was, it was really a great idea. So, with that, I think that's all I got, other than, cheeps. I couldn't wait.
They, they just love to make us hold our breath and test our hoes. I swear.
Crystal, you ready?
I'm ready. Crystal now chose human resource director slash special projects. I do joke with new hires that all job descriptions do say other duties as assigned, and for me, that's in my job title, that's the special projects card. We did have our first new hire orientation this morning. Only two people showed up. That's okay. It's still new. We'll do a better job of communicating the importance of it. One of the new hires was our sheriff. You guys already met him. The other one works for him, so he's back over. And I apologize, Kathy, when I asked Jenny to send those out, she totally did not think about the new commissioner maybe wanting to participate in new hire orientation. So, but we're going to start doing those the last Monday of the month for all of the new hires that started that month, so they get the same information. They know, we tell everybody the exact same thing, so hopefully this will help clarify some issues and alleviate some confusion. I know one of the things that we do different here at Gary County than other locations is our two-week delay between the pay period ending and the payday. And the sheriff said that he was asking people over there questions. Everybody's going, I don't know, I don't know. So, hopefully, this communication open, encouraging them to ask questions and stuff will improve everybody's knowledge and, of course, the information. You can always come to HR. And that's the other thing we tell them is that, yes, use the chain of command whenever possible. However, please don't let anybody tell you you cannot go to HR. So, I did go to the Kansas Association of Counties Board Meeting last week and was officially sworn in as their 2025 president. This is their 50th year. Thank you very much. Part of that day also was our day at the Capitol, and they had a couple things that I will be sharing with you. One is they've got a new website that is very much user-friendly. It's still under construction, but there's login for everybody, so if you've never logged in before, there's information on how to log in, and they all have your information because I've forwarded it to them, so they have all your information. And then the other thing that they did is they sent out a survey to all counties. I sent it to Tammy to fill out because I figured she'd have it, but what are the costs of state-required services provided by the counties? So, all these things that we're required to do by the state, how much does that cost us? Because we know darn good and well that the state is not paying for all that, so that's what this information includes. Not all counties responded, so for those that were there participating in the state, the Capitol, or the shared day, they were told, it's not too late. It's a living, breathing document, and you can send in your information, they will get this updated. But we're just trying to get others to understand that we're required to do X, Y, Z by the state, but we're not funded by the state to get those things done. That's part of what the tax dollars are going for. So, we also discussed quite a bit as to communicating with our citizens. They rightfully complain or express their frustrations with cost of inflation. One thing that many of them may forget is that we buy the same things that they do, so if inflation hits them, it hits us as well. We all have to pay for electricity. We all have to pay for everything. It's just that certain things we have to buy that the average citizen doesn't. They don't have to worry about gravel. They don't have, they don't spend near as much on fuel. So, it's the certain things that they may not take into consideration, that if we help in communicating exactly where the money is going, it may help them to understand a little bit better with what they're going through. In addition, and this is in the Kansas comment as well, if you haven't had an opportunity to review it, that in state statute, it says that in even numbered years, which is what this is, it's a 24 to 25, their fiscal year, the Senate is set to for a 90 calendar day. So, they are set, whatever reason, they decided to follow that this year, so they are on 90 calendar days, so they're expected to be done by mid-April. I did hear some comments about that there's bets going on as to whether they'll be over or under on that, so we'll see. One of the things they're looking at right now is a constitutional amendment to place a cap on the valuation increases at 3%. As of Wednesday, there were still amendments being made to that and changes being made to that, so we'll see. What they do, what they did recommend is that whether you are for this legislation or against it, it's important for your legislators to know. So, whatever Gary County's stance is on it, it's important for us to share that with our representatives. The House does want to have their budget process complete by mid-February so that it can be reviewed basically the same time as the governor comes out with hers. And again, all this information is in the Kansas comments. If you've had an opportunity to review it, great. We just discussed it first before it came out there, so, any questions?
Well, you said 3%, and I've been hearing 4%.
4% was what they presented last year, and that's what they were going to go for, but it just kind of fell through, but it's, this year, it's 3% is what was presented. And again, they could make more amendments, they could change it, but 3% is what they've got going to committee right now.
Now, the number of the bill.
Let's see, that's the 911 board. I don't know, it's SCR 1603, legislation, SCR 1603. And then I do know that they are also looking at Senate Bill 11, which would require state 911 board to do CPR training for all 911 operators. And there's also talk about making 911 or any dispatch considered a first responder because of the importance of what they do. They have the same stressors as the people that respond, so making dispatch considered a first responder. So, they're looking at that as well.
It's a hard job.
Yeah, it is. It's not something that I would voluntarily do. I'll be honest.
That's all I have for questions, anybody?
Okay. Last thing I have is that because of the, the snow and everything, we did not get to do our employee task force. By the time we got back to work, we were a little bit behind, so we cleared off for January. So, our first task force meeting will be February 12. Kathy, in case you're not aware, we have an employee task force that meets every month, second Wednesday of the month, from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. at emergency management, and commissioners have taken turns attending. So, I just need to know who's going to be in our first one in February.
Obviously, December.
It's the second Wednesday?
Mm-hmm. So, it'll be the 12th.
I'll do that this next time, Kathy.
Sure. Okay. And I'll get you added to the agenda, so when I set it out, you'll get a copy of it, but we just, Emergency Management is kind enough to host us over there, and we, I bring donuts. I never promised I'd be healthy, but, so if you've got a request, just let me know. Make sure we get you to, I've got some people that have their favorites, so I must make sure to bring theirs. That's, that's all I've got for the moment. And then Trish, I did get you signed up for County Day at the Capitol, so if you need the confirmation or whatever, I can get that for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
Can you just send these, this to our legislators so they see how much it actually costs?
Yeah, how much the cost of that.
Yeah. Because I don't think they understand.
Are you ready for me? Go ahead and go.
Just one sec. Kathy's hiding under the table.
Okay.
Let's hear those off, and I got the extra copies.
Okay, good. Good, good, good. Hey, keep, keep, good, good. I didn't leave a copy for myself.
Start it.
Yeah, what?
I didn't keep a copy for myself.
Oh.
Be careful, I got one too.
This does not, what do we understand?
And this is her 911 station. Thanks for that, Beth.
Oh, I think I, you know, Mr. Tomlin, Mrs. Shink, she's tracing early this morning and ask them, thank you all the time for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Tammy.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Amy Robinson, Finance Director. Welcome back, Commissioner Fremont. One thing I wanted to share with you, we've done a good job with our new automated purchase card program, and for the revenue sharing in 2024, which would have been June through December, we have received $5,046.59, so that's about 1% of our total purchases for the year, so that's not too bad. I mean, it's money that's back in our pocket that we wouldn't have otherwise, so. The other thing I wanted to mention is the YMCA request that had came through. So, they're sending a request of $60,372.97. They're asking for it for 2025. We had them come a year ago and had put them on hold. We had said no as far as in appropriation, and we were looking at some other things potentially with the sports complex, and so this request is back out here again, and I just need direction on how you want me to address it back to her.
She actually sent an email to me, too. I, I let her know that we, right now, our budget is set for the year, and I know that Commissioner Tyson had talked about using the sports complex fund since it is for them to have tournaments and bring people into the community. I don't know if that's something that we need to discuss further, you know, have put it on the agenda and talk about. I don't know. So, that's where...
Yeah, that's a tough one.
How much were they requesting? It's for their floor to replace the floor.
I think that's a discussion for a later day. I don't think it's something we want to discuss right now.
So, you just want me to let them know that it's going to be on the agenda at a later time?
Yeah.
Is there something that we need to do research on or look at in order to determine what you're looking at, consideration of it?
I mean, we'd, if we used the sports complex fund, we'd have to change the charter ordinance or charter resolution, correct?
That's what we looked at before.
Because I think it says that it can be used for existing. This is off memory, which is dangerous.
Yeah.
But I, I guess.
I know we talked about that, so I don't know.
It, it could be used for existing if they, there was a termination made that we weren't going to achieve an act, an in-sports complex. I'd go research that again and make sure that's...
But that's my memory. For that person, I emailed this morning to me, that they're going to try and have a advisory meeting on February 5. He said they're not getting any participation. Nobody's coming. Maybe 20. So, that's going to have to be looked at as well, you know, how we address that. Just need to look at that initially.
When you say nobody's coming, nobody's coming where?
To the CDP advisory. The turnout is low, so they don't even have...
Oh.
But some of that is, and Rick's trying to restart it because I saw a response today saying, well, this is the first time I've seen an invitation in several months to a meeting.
Interesting.
And so, anyway, that person was very appreciative, you know, so, so maybe it was just lost in translation, lack of communication. I don't know.
One more thing I wanted to let you know, and I didn't tune in on Crystal's presentation. She may have already said the W2 side, but W2s and 1099s went out last Friday, so that is good news. We got all those taken care of, and we're in pretty good shape working on budget, our budget audit information for the auditors, so try to get that to them early February so we can get a date scheduled for our audit. Anything you have for me? I don't think so. Thank you, Rick.
Oh, the only thing is, and I don't know if you're watching, I did reach out to Chris Ann about community corrections. You haven't gotten any money yet, have you?
Yes, it came through on the 23rd, finally.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, do we need still send a letter?
Well, I mean, it was supposed to be paid the first of the month, and so I think that there was a reminder that they're telling her she has nothing to operate on until they were at their mercy to give us the money.
Yeah, I think we should still do a letter just to let them know, hey, that puts us in a bind.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because there's nothing we can do to, to counter them not paying us.
And where she can't, problem to pay the other, you know, now.
Right. And, you know, the other thing, too, is it's not like you can just not pay your employees because then you have no employees and no program, and so all of those things are detrimental to the overall health of the program.
Yeah.
So...
She was under the order last week when I talked to her, so she's going to come and post the letter.
But, yeah, it did finally come through, but, I mean, you know, it, it definitely wasn't timely.
Sure. That's all I had.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Hi, Ken.
Hi.
Oh, I did, Tammy and Ken spoke at Cornus last week and did a good job. Ken made me...
He did.
About to see him.
Very important.
Yep. I think Louisa has copies on that, Shugerman, too. And you saw them.
Yes.
I got my pledge report, too, so...
Okay. Ken, do you know whether Jeff was gonna be able to make it today?
I haven't heard. I haven't a clue.
I thought Luisa said.
All right.
Yeah, cause on the agenda, she has Jeff Klein and Jeremy.
Right.
Betsy, that printer is stupid.
It is. I thought it was me. I've been wanting to print it for years though, and I thought then might be the best.
Well.
No, I don't think it is. Well, I know that Zach was working on it one day and I thought, oh.
He said he probably needed new, um, guide wheels or whatever. Well, by the time he paid for that, he was about to pay for new.
You're running early, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, I was reading. If you guys are ready, let's go.
Welcome, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Under Sheriff.
Good morning, everyone. I'm being told I provide a bi-weekly report to y'all, so that's what I will be doing. I'll be giving you guys some averages for the last two weeks.
I asked you if you wanted to do that, I didn't say you had.
And I agree. I agree. I think it's important to, uh, update the community. So in the last two weeks, we've had a average of, uh, three accidents with one fatality and the other ones were non-injury. And then we have assisted outside agencies on average in the last two weeks 24 times. We've had five check wheel fairs on average in the last two weeks. I'm not gonna say on average every time, so this is just an average for two weeks. That way we're a little more efficient. Uh, we've done 40 citations, uh, 86 served civil papers, four drug investigations. We are averaging one and a half DUIs per week. Just under one fleeing a lude per week, eight motor assist, two offender registration violations, six prisoner transports per, per week, one theft per week, 98 traffic stops per week, one open container, and 10 warrant arrests per week. So those are numbers I thought was relevant to provide to the commission and community. Any questions?
How are things going?
So, start of the third week, one, one day at a time. So.
Bringing through fire.
All right. Well, anything we can do to help you, let us know.
Thank you, yes. Under Sheriff.
We'll see you later at the nine one one.
Yes, sir.
I think you're gonna, are you, you're gonna stick around for the?
We're gonna stick around for the jail conversation as well. I've also invited, uh, Major Anderson over to attend that, as well as Under Sheriff Gilbert, so.
Sounds good.
You guys, you might as well stay over here all day.
I, I'm planning on a late lunch.
Enjoy our company.
Well, looks like we're gonna get rid of some snow.
We need you.
Yeah, a lot of it, man. Get rid of some of that ice anyway.
Yeah, isn't there another forecast coming up though?
There'll rain it, rain Thursday and Friday.
It'll melt and everything will be a muddy mess.
Yeah. I can stand the snow, that ice is a killer, boy. Yep. Think we're all up this morning.
Everybody left.
It's recently. I'd bring it up there, but I didn't. You know, I always said that, you know, folders are pretty and usually you could go over here and then you say move it and then screen it.
Mm-hmm.
Is, have I not said that?
Yeah, you look through that.
Okay. I don't know if Zach has called yet.
But you didn't send it to him. You just sent that one.
Well, yeah, I don't know. You know, it's on a folder, you have to say, huh? Yeah, yeah. Maybe they sent. Take all my do something. But he's usually here on Wednesday.
Yeah, they're calling or emailing to him, you know, have you heard something?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine. Yep, sit right there. It's fine for you.
Okay, I like.
No. It's in the state high school. We're still here, but planning for next year, we'll maybe.
Yeah.
Mike, how are you?
I'm doing good, Jeff, I'm watching.
Every day is a new day.
And that's why they're gonna use the notebooks.
But you're actually doing really good.
Oh, yeah. I, I haven't read it all, but I know that that's what it is. He'll probably talk about it at the end.
That's wonderful.
Mr. Klester? Hello?
Yeah. Excuse it. Yes. Good morning, this is Rodney.
Hi, I've got you on speaker for the PBC meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
So is that it then, Luisa?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm ready if you are.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting of the PBC to order here. And, oh. Let's see, let's make Luisa happy here. And now we'll call it officially, officially, officially. So first order of the business is hospital. Mr. Klein.
All right, good morning. So we continue to make progress. So you'll probably see quite a few invoices coming through here. If you haven't already, there's another stack that I forwarded on to the Pika this morning. So the big radiology project that we've been on for nine months with all the air handlers and, and everything down below on that main floor is all complete now. So those final invoices are going to be coming to you. Um, we finished up the SPD kitchen part with those new air handlers and all that. Heating and air and ductwork. So those are going to be coming to you. So those two big projects are now done. Um, the boiler room, we're getting really close to finishing up. Uh, week of February third, American Boiler will be up here from Wichita to start tuning that new burner that we put in it. All the plumbing and all the new controls are all there and everything. So it'll be shortly after that that we'll have the, the old superior boiler back online and that will give us three operating boilers. And should be noted that the two boilers that we got new made it through the cold snap without any issue. We hit about ninety percent load on the one and about eighty-two percent load on the other. So we had plenty of capacity. And, and actually, the, the load on the building is not at four or five in the morning. It's really about after those doors start opening and closing and people start coming through the building and the sterilizers get going. The main load hits that building between nine and noon. You know, so when it was so cold out, that's when you noticed it. But they did just fine, as did all the air handlers that we put in and everything. We didn't have anything freeze up or anything. No chilled water pipe freezes or anything, so that all worked out really well. Uh, currently, the two projects, well, we're working on one project now. We're getting ready to start the second. The project that's really active now is M A B one, redoing all the heating and cooling and electrical over that M A B one building. So those three floors are clinic space. So that will get all new heating and air conditioning as well as new units in each of those suites, as well as new electrical and things like that. So that's the project that's going hot and heavy now. We've already put in all the new feeder lines for the hot water. We've put in all the feeder lines for the chilled water. The chilled water unit that goes on the roof has a twenty-nine week lead time. So here again, we're just waiting on parts. And, uh, so when do we get that in the late spring or early spring, we'll get that up there. Uh, the boilers for up there will be condenser boilers. So we'll go away from this huge nineteen seventy-one cast iron boiler to something that looks like a radiator that you would sit in your living room. And that's a condenser boiler, smaller than this table. I have two of them. And then we have all the space done for that and everything. So, um, that's what's going on there. And then we're getting ready to start with D L Smith, the, the redo of the main electrical portion of the old hospital, the old nineteen sixty-six switchgear, all those old kitchen panels, all the old panels that are stuck in those closets that, that you can't even get few, or breakers for anymore and things like that. So we're going to make some changes in and around and behind those elevators, uh, where the current mailroom is, where the locker room is, uh, for the kitchen staff. And, and allow that to be a big electrical room and relocate some of that so that, uh, we don't have to spend a lot of money running conduit and everything across the hallway and such. By redoing the project that way, we saved about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars off of the, off of the original deal. So that's gonna be a big win for us once we get that going. But it will take two years to finish. It's mapped out at six hundred days.
Wow.
And that's just because you gotta run conduit from the basement to the third floor, from the big electrical closets back there where the generator are, all the way forward and all the way up through that old concrete. So it's gonna, that's gonna be a big project with a lot of disruption, but we'll figure that out as we go.
Is there a price tag on it?
Yeah, it came in at about two point eight million. So then, um, the other things that we're gonna start looking at here pretty seriously is we need to do, uh, the cooling tower always needed to be repaired, so we're in a position now to do that. And we're not putting up a new cooling tower, we're just going to, uh, fix the top piece that distributes the water out. So the cooling tower, water comes in the top, comes out the bottom. And the whole top's rusted out completely. That was noted in the report years ago. And so we're gonna put a stainless steel top on it so when it disperses water, comes down through the cooling towers. And then, um, going to fix some of the media, which is the fins in between. And then, and then back down and do some stuff with the controls so that we can control how much water and how many cooling towers need to run at a, at a single time. So that will be not a big project by any means compared to some of these other ones, but something we want to get done before the summer months. And then the other big one out there that we're starting to look at now is what we've always talked about, and that's the wastewater piping coming out of the main part of the hospital, the old second floor and third floor. So we're in a position now with things going on in M A B one that we can start turning our focus to how we're going to attack that issue and how we're going to fix basically all the wastewater piping. So, and that means having somebody thirty feet up in the ceiling on a lift or whatever. So it's gonna be difficult, it's gonna be slow going. So we haven't put it out for bib, we're kinda just talking about how we're even gonna try to do it. You know, if we're gonna shut down a section to do it, or how, how would even, how we're even gonna do it. So that's where we're at.
So Rod, can you hear us?
Yes, I am. Yes.
You had a question in our last PBC meeting about kind of the, the long range plan. I don't know what you called it, but, um...
Expected, E F C, expected final cost?
Yes, okay, thank you. Can you shed some light on your question?
If I recall correctly, we've requested this, uh, oh, some time ago and Stormont Vale had indicated they were preparing a use plan for a five-year use plan. And that once they had that item completed, they'd be able to better project what an expected final cost is, in which areas they were going to, uh, continue forward with on our original, or I guess a follow-up one that the, uh, MEP engineer had revised from the very initial one to the, and then also the items that we were not going to be implementing. An example was the toilets in the former patient rooms would no longer be required and they would take that as an efficiency, not include it. But there was additional work that was being needed or costs that had exceeded what the budgeted line item are, in, in effort to determine where we would be at with an expected final cost. It's my understanding that Stormont Vale has no, no, uh, intentions of supplementing this work program and just trying to evaluate where we stand today with what's respect to what can be eliminated and then what needs to be constructed as we go forward. And then also as part of that, who's approving or who's saying yea or nay to what we're eliminating in that original scope? To allow us to either capture the over expenditure or over budgeted items or if, if what I heard earlier today, there was an item that was three, four hundred thousand dollars under, if that's where we're expecting to capture it.
My answer is pretty simple. There was twenty million dollars and once we get to twenty million dollars, we're done. And I believe, and, and, and we have till, what, January of twenty twenty-eight to get that, I think that's right.
Five years, Jeff.
Yep. And we have till January of twenty twenty-eight to get that done. And I believe it's known to Stormont Vale that anything that's not done at that point, I think it's actually in the agreement that says they will make the decision on whether they want to move forward at that or whatever, and it's, it's at their cost. I think that's how it's outlined in the agreement as well. So.
But I think some, some of the concern was, is that we wanted to make sure that all the twenty million was going to the building and didn't get done on things that weren't...
Everything that's, everything, so that goes under scrutiny from Rock and Associates. Okay, that's the engineers. They always go back to what the scope is and what the original assessment was to ensure that the projects that we're doing were on the original assessment. Okay, and I think you'll find every project that we've done was in the original assessment. And so the projects as far as being done in order are basically how you keep the building operating. I mean, we've...
Yeah, I think that's great. Yeah, I think, and I, and I can't say, I, I think you're doing the right thing in that respect. But something... I, I know we say that we have the, the twenty million, but, and we have the five years to complete it, but they should be able to tell us where we're at in that process. And they should be able to say, there's gonna be sufficient funds in this.
Well, there won't be sufficient funds because of the cost. We won't be able to get all the things that were on the list done simply because the assessment was done in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and we're dealing with twenty twenty-five costs. And so there are gonna be things left off, like the parking lot's probably not gonna get done. All right, that was listed on the assessment. I think we've allocated with the, the agreements that were out there, I think we're right around fully allocated right now or spent somewhere about thirteen to fifteen million, something like that, probably. Yeah, you probably, I'm a little ahead of you because I got stuff out there. Yeah, so, yeah, so, you know, that's where...
To that, to, to that point then, they should be able to tell us which items that aren't going to be able to be completed. And with that list of items, we should be able to begin discussions. Are they necessary in the taxpayers' position? Are they necessary in Stormont Vale's position? I, I really think we need to start discussing that now, if not some definite point in the future as to which items aren't going to be able to be afforded. And if they are necessary for Stormont Vale's continued operation, then I think we, they should be discussed sooner than later.
Well, I just go back, I just go back to the agreement that said there was twenty million and then it's Stormont Vale's responsibility to address any of those issues after the twenty million. So I don't, I don't understand, I don't understand, I don't understand what, there, to my knowledge, there's nothing past the twenty million. Now, if you wanna give me another twenty million, I'm sure I can spend it.
Oh, I, I'm quite certain you could. You could all do a good job of that.
But I, I don't understand, I don't understand, I don't understand. To me, it was fairly cut and dry that when the agreement, the twenty million was spent, that was the end of the deal and Stormont has the responsibility thereafter. So I, I'm just, I can't go past that.
Okay, then, then I'm, I'm, I'm requesting that we determine what is going to be left off of that list that was originally supported. Is that so difficult to prepare? Regardless of whether the agreement says yes or no. I mean, it always, it always continues to become a contentious po, a point when it's brought up for discussion. This is what it is, this is what agreed to. But we had it discussed previously and I'm not sure that that's what I heard Stormont Vale say, that they were going to take care of it. Their point was they weren't intending to supplement the list to complete those items, if I recall, joint meeting we had at the, at the Stormont Vale Flannios Campus.
I can tell you, I put down money in my capital plan for twenty twenty-six for the parking lot, because I don't think we'll get to it with the twenty million dollars.
So just a suggestion, maybe the PBC could write a letter of what exactly they want to know and then you guys could come back with the list.
So, I mean, I don't wanna discount anything off the list at this point.
Sure.
You know, because the rooftop unit on, on M A B two might break tomorrow, right? It's on the list. Is it a high priority on the list? Absolutely not. All right, so...
Unless it breaks.
Unless it breaks, that it becomes a bigger priority. So, you know, to say what's gonna get done and not get done is just, you know, a little bit of a, a wash in itself.
I think it's, oh, can it be based off the best information we have today, recognizing that it is a future document and that it was based on the best information we had today? And it's always, most budgets are subject to change in an existing building that are subject to just the very same as what you're expressing. It's always an ebb and a flow.
So, all right, well, I mean, I, Trish said, you know what I think probably needs to happen, because it has to go up the flagpole for me and...
Sure.
Come back down.
So who do we send a letter to? Stormont or Rock and Associates?
Send it to, I would send it to Tim Schultz.
Oh, okay. Counselor, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Klein or Jeremy? Did you have anything to add to it?
No, I think Jeff covered it well. I took a very informative tour with him here last week and seen the progress being made. Things are looking good.
My, my biggest question is, have we tackled some of the biggest expenses right now?
Boilers.
Yeah, I, I need that one.
Yeah, so the boilers and the air handlers that we addressed. I can't, I can't, you have to be there every day for me to explain or understand how different the building operates and feels now versus where we were eighteen months ago. You know, I mean, I had sections of the hospital, I couldn't get above sixty-eight, sixty-nine degrees, you know, and all those issues have been eliminated. You know, we have control features now, we, we can sit there and watch what an air handler's doing. We have control features now, we we can sit there and watch what an air handler is doing, you know, we can control the temperature in the O R suite, we had none of that before, you know? So there, the building is really a lot different. I mean, just the physical structure inside, the infrastructure is different, but how the building heats itself, cools itself i- is just a lot more economical now.
But would it be fair statement to say that, I mean, as we move forward, there are still things you're identifying that potentially may have been on that list that now you're going to do something completely different?
That's true.
Offices where you had rooms and now they're offices and, so, I mean, those were things you identified immediately, but as you go, there's still going to be things that you identify, well, hey, we could do something better with this based on how we're operating.
Right, and that's why we kind of moved the cooling towers up the list a little bit because they are a critical element to to how the building cools itself in the summertime and we had the opportunity to get them addressed here, you know, and and things and and we had some issues with them last summer. So, you know, we're taking that opportunity to address those as those because other things have got put on the back burner and there's other initiatives going on that will change how the building gets used eventually as well. So, you know.
So it may not be to our benefit for you to do exactly what's on that list, the way it says on the list, if you identify a different use for certain areas. So you're actually saving us money by not doing it and then undoing it.
Right, yeah. And and everything, I can say, everything that we have done has been absolutely critical to do. You you can't run the building without what we've not done. So.
And you're going to find things that you didn't know you didn't know until you find out you didn't know them as you.
Yeah, we have a lot of unknowns.
Right.
So.
So it is kind of a work in progress, which makes it really hard to just create a list and say, these are definitively what have to be done and what not be done. So I understand where you're coming from when you say that. I understand Mr. Glassner's concern and wanting to be able to address the taxpayers, so.
So.
Well, Jeff, thank you.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
And just to top it up, I think you guys are doing a great job up there. You've got a facility that operates now that the people can enjoy being in and to further aid in the H R comfort of not only the patients, but as your associates and other consultants that come into that building, it it has not gone without notice. I will tell you that from a personal standpoint, so thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you.
So the the next order is is kind of accounts receivable and accounts payable. And I guess I just, the 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 main thing, I think, from from your perspective is, is it still profitable to keep trying to collect the money that's that's owed us? And so, I don't know, third or fourth page in the back with the little yellow highlight at the top, that's the main sheet. So it shows, clear to the bottom right-hand corner, almost eight hundred thousand dollars that we've collected more than what we've paid out over this year. So that could be used to pay down the bond when it, when when we're allowed to do that. You know, and the only, only things we're paying are what we have to, which is like a, for this month, there was commissions to Haas and Long for their collection activities and then we have some storage down in Hutchinson for some of the stuff that we got to keep for a long time. You know, I still, there's, the next sheet is accounts payable, kind of my list of of some of the things that I've received invoices on recently where people think they still want paid and we're still trying to work with them to tell them that the the hospital per se has no money and they're not going to get paid, but that's just so I can kind of keep track of them and so you know what's, what's out there, but there shouldn't be any liability on our part or your part. So, I don't know, that's all I had on my side unless you've got other questions or something.
No, I think, you know, the bottom line is as long as we're still taking in the money more than what we're putting down, I think it's worth keeping on.
Yeah. And and, you know, we we did turn another one point two million over to collections and it'll be a, a while before that money starts to end by the time they go through all the legal process and whatever. And and I'm just guessing, but I, I'm guessing that there will be an uptick in the spring from offsets to tax returns or something like that, too, maybe, but that's just a guess, I don't know.
Appreciate that.
Next thing is detention center. And so we have sheriff and undersheriff and others here and you also received a couple proposals. One of them was expensive and expensive and the other one was less expensive and less And so, so with this, Jeff, do you want to come up and and I'll let you just do a, talk about where you're at, yeah, sure, where you're at, what your thoughts are, if you have any ideas on these, I assume you've seen these two proposals?
I have.
If you have any ideas on those.
So this is on my third week. I'm trying to gather as much facts and details as possible. That's my other job responsibilities. I have read both of these as well as a report from two thousand seventeen and I, I don't know if we can, I don't know if I can support the seventy-seven thousand dollar bid that we received, comparing what we get from that to the two thousand and some, it's just such a huge guy there and I don't think it's worth the extra, paying the extra seventy thousand on the difference from what we're receiving there. So there could be some things that we could do, make some phone calls, look into their experience, but they both have quite a good experience. They both have experience with Kansas jails, so we could reach out to sheriffs from those jails and gather some details and facts to help base this decision moving forward. That'd be one recommendation I would make on reaching out to some of our networks here in Kansas, since there are jails on both sides of the bids that we've received. I did a tour.
I was just going to ask as far as both of those, they're mostly just concentrating on the jail part of the facility, correct?
There, there's some other work that was done, but particularly I'm paying attention to the jail side only.
That's the most, yes, okay.
Yes. I did do a tour of the jail, undersheriff and I did last week, and I do believe this is definitely a huge priority moving forward, in my belief that that jail needs a lot of work, it's it's way behind on catching up with current times and manpower and safety issues and liabilities are concerned, mine as well. So that's kind of my input.
So, back to, this is specifically jail, H M N, they're more responsible for the overall building and administrative and that's what we're paying them for.
Okay. For what it seemed like, but I, I just scanned them here, but the more expensive one did a little bit more in depth on why we would need how many beds. For the other one, I didn't get the impression that they did quite that much research on, well, how many beds should we have unless, you know, you and your expertise and your staff can figure that out?
Well, it's pretty easy to figure out if you go back and look at the A D P and the average daily population for like the last, we go back for as long as you want to go back. So we can tell you what we're averaging over twenty years and we can, you know, take into consideration outside factors, but I think we can definitely get a pretty accurate number on what we're looking at twenty years ago and probably what we're going to look at down the road unless something significantly changes. So me coming in, Major Anderson can add if he chooses to add, he's been working in the jail facility for a long time at different jails, but it seems not to change a whole lot. So I don't think I have to be an expert to tell you that we're probably going to maintain this unless something drastically changes.
Well, and I think, given a little bit of history, the last, we have an old part of the jail and then what we call a new part of the jail. When that was, I can't remember what year was that, was it fif- eight?
Which, two thousand nine?
The like, the latest was two thousand nine. When that was put out to the taxpayers and why we took out bond was, okay, we're going to add a hundred and eighty-nine bed, you know, make it a hundred and eighty-nine bed facility because we're going to be able to house outside people and we'll be able to pay that bond. Well, that never happened. I mean, our average is between ninety and a hundred prisoners and we have a hundred and eighty-nine beds. And not all of those, because of the condition, are able to even be used, correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, we are limited because there's cells that can do four individuals, but we might only go put one in there because of whatever violent or certain specialty, but.
But I'm talking about, are there places in the jail because it is in such bad shape where we cannot put anybody?
I believe we're utilizing everything we have, old and new, it's just how we utilize it, what we're limited on, is that correct, Major?
We do have some cells because of plumbing issues.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, that they might not even be able to be used because of that situation.
Not a lot of them, but there are.
But still, we have a hundred and eighty-nine beds that we're only using about a hundred.
Correct. Wow, that's how many people we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the more expensive one, when I was reading through them, it encompasses everybody outside of just the jail because I think the one just looks at our average daily population trends and things of that nature. The second one that's more extensive goes in and takes in to consideration the county attorney and their plea agreements, their trial, their basically what they asked for for things of that nature. And it also brings in the judges as well. So you're looking at everything from sentencing to how charges are filed and everything else, even down to the, to the road deputy and what they're, what they're arresting for versus what they're just issuing notices to appear for and everything else. I think it's an all encompassing plan on ways to reduce the number, but then again, whether or not you can get everybody on board for every single item to reduce the number of population, it kind of might be a little bit similar to the thing with the juvenile reform that they did where you may not be able to get everybody to agree that, well, we're not going to arrest on this or we are going to arrest on this. So, I mean, it, it's a lot of money just for, maybe we can get everybody to get on this one as well, so.
Well, I know there's been a trend probably in the last ten years of not having as high bonds either, so people are not staying in jail as long as they had been in the past. So that's another thing that, you know, I think needs to be looked at as well. So I, I, I feel we should probably do the more encompassing one because we do need to look at everything to make sure, because if we're going to do a bond, we're going to have to show the public that we are addressing every issue, we're not doing this halfway and looking at ways to save money before we enter and to ask them to sign on another bond, because we can't do this without a bond. Uh, there's no way. And, you know, it, we are in dire straits and 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 really, you know, I mean, this is going to go after this next phase. I mean, we're probably going to have to show the public, letting them into the jail to see how bad it is because it is bad.
I would agree. I was going to recommend setting up tours of the jail.
Yes.
To start the process now, even though if we do go to a bond later down the road, it's going to be years, but.
Yes. I don't think we can wait years to do that. We need to get on it.
I was in shock when I saw the jail.
And it has been in in bad shape for many, many years.
Yes.
So, Jamie, with that said, when we had our meeting with H M N about phase two and they recommended having somebody specific come in and look at the jail, whatever, am I wrong, but I thought it was like fifteen to twenty thousand?
Thirty-five is what was in that.
I thought that included H M N.
No, H M N was separate. So when I talked to this gentleman that gave us the proposal for seventy-seven thousand, two fifty, I specifically asked him and he said, they didn't ask me what I would do it for, they asked me if it could be done for thirty-five thousand and I told them yes, but I'm telling you that what needs to be done to make sure you know how to move forward is going to cost you more than thirty-five thousand. So when I asked for the proposal, I asked him to give me exactly what he thought it would take in order for us to get the information we needed to know where we needed to go. So this could potentially be scaled back, as Sheriff Beckman said, you know, maybe this cost is a little higher than we want. There might be some pieces that might not be valuable for us, as the undersheriff noted, but this was an all encompassing cost for what he believed it would take to move forward.
That's why I kind of want to reach out to other sheriff departments because on the flip side, the cheaper bid, we could request more and that would go up and we would get more details. So I think reaching out to these other sheriff departments in Kansas would give us a good idea on what we're truly getting in one way or the other. Am I going to handle that side of things?
And some of these other sheriffs, the expensive one, they may say, well, we only did this part of it and that got us what we needed or something.
Or we did it and it wasn't worth it.
Worth the six thousand for preempt interviews.
Yeah.
That's fair.
But yeah, I definitely think it needs to be done as soon as possible.
Yeah.
The one thing I would like to see that we ask for from Justice is that they give us how many hours, because I did, unless I missed it, I didn't see that they said the hours, they just said, here's the dollars. But on that second proposal they sent, so Bill Barneau's, he actually gave us hours and I like to know how many hours they think they're really going to spend. Because that gives you a good idea on, he's telling us his hourly rate's ninety dollars, but there's nothing that tells me what Justice's hourly rate is. So it would be good if we're really comparing, comparing apples to apples on what the rate is per hour.
Yeah, I definitely think, and I, I don't know if the P B C got the information of how much we've actually spent over there on maintenance costs last year.
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand is what we spent in twenty-four, because we did, yeah, we just looked that up.
Not mentioning the monthly payments of jetting that's going to continue.
Exactly. So, yeah, this is something that needs to be addressed, but we also don't want to do it rushed, we want to do it the right way.
Well, in the interest of time, are we in agreement that you ask around the state and see?
Yes, sir.
I mean, as commissioned to.
I, I'm not opposed to that, but I also want to keep everybody apprised that we are kicking the can down the road, another spot, and with what we have spent in repairs and overtime and things of that nature will continue to accrue. I would also like to be cautious that we're not looking in the rearview mirror, taking the rearview mirror approach when we look at what has been done historically, the number of inmates and the type of inmates, but that we also make sure we're looking through the front windshield as we prepare for what's the next five or ten years, especially with what's changed here in the recent laws with handling L V G T, mental patients and et cetera, and how we prepare and equip this facility in terms of physical plan and the people to operate this facility.
The, both of those proposals have that in there, Rodney. They have future space needs and the forecast and the projection of model scenarios, so they are looking forward on what would potentially be needed.
Okay, I, I read through those and, but I, what I captured they were spending a fair amount of time on was the historical side of what they, what we were detaining and I venture to say that that's, that model has significantly changed over the last ten or fifteen years or definitely since we have built, we did the other, their most recent renovation to it. And there, there could be an option that we not include a particular type of inmate, that it would be cheaper for us in the long run to contract with another facility in an adjacent territory that, from a total cost perspective, we're cheaper to incarcerate that individual at a facility that already has, has those capabilities. I mean, there's an option that's out there as we look through the front end of it and the total cost on an inmate per basis day or whatever that that barometer is. and the total cost on an inmate per basis day, or whatever that, that barometer is.
Thanks, Rodney.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? I mean, I don't have anything else. Thank you. You're done with this, then? Do you have any other questions?
No, um, no, the last question I have is to Tammy, I mean, we're, we're at seventy-seven thousand. If we went that route, or is that...
We would have to go through C I C. I, I would wanna pull that out of facility.
So we're gonna have to do that in the next quarter, maybe?
I mean, you can, you can, uh, make it a special request to be adjusted outside that quarter if, if that's what we need to do.
And may, and maybe just throwing it out there, um, we could split the cost with the forfeiture fund.
Maybe it could be a joint.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Turning in, that's her. It doesn't involve, so...
Yep.
Not that I did.
Okay. Good, then, uh, PBC will stand the jury.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice day, Rodney.
Yeah, but do you have other copies of those?
Just a couple, I handed them out to everybody.
Oh, you already have them, okay. So, with that said, next on the agenda is, uh, nine-one-one board discussion. And I wanna preface this by saying, um, it's kind of a concern about, uh, funds where we are with the funds, but also, um, to let you know, there are copies of resolution and bylaws up there. So anybody that wants some can have, I think there's maybe six up there of each. So anybody that wants to look at those, um, but that kinda spells out, that spells out, um, kinda where we stand. Um, I think Betsy got these for us and basically, the nine-one-one board is a sub entity. So, Erie County, Junction City, City of Milford, City of Grandview, Liza, really can't interfere too much. But with that said, we are concerned from the county's standpoint, because the funding runs through the county. And so our finance officer has to be in charge. And if you, if you look at that, um, she would be tasked with, um, audits, um, a lot of the finance stuff. Um, so basically, we just wanted to have a discussion with you folks and see what you, um, what you're aware of and what the plan might be moving forward. Um, and then there's a second part to this, because we also have two vacancies that we need to get Phil and the boat on the county's side. Um, so with that said, uh, who wants to speak?
Would we, uh, are we in any kind of violation talking without a, a meeting? Can we fall under that rule?
That's it.
The nine-one-one board is subject to Cora and the open records.
It's an open meeting.
That would be my first question to ask. I mean, are we gonna get ourselves in trouble for all being and talking to nine-one-one board?
Well, the door's open.
No.
Well, it's an open meeting.
No, I just, that was a question.
That's a legitimate question. I, I, I would like, and I, I, I don't know if, um, and if you all have had, um, access to the funding as far as what the reports and stuff, but, uh, we're in the red right now and that was the concern and that's why I asked the chairman, so if...
We're okay now.
Okay.
Because we got our...
Just got it recently, right?
Well, three months, but, um, when you pay your monthly bills, if you're gonna have about two thousand dollars left to get you through until the next payment comes in. Um, that sheet that you have in front of you, is it okay if I speak, Chairman?
Pardon?
Is it okay if I speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that document that I handed out to you guys, that's just an analysis I took and I did the historical from nineteen twenty-four, and then I took an average net. And when you look at that average net, we're losing really easily about a hundred and thirteen thousand a year, which, you know, for a while there, you had some capital that allowed you to pull on those cash reserves, but at the end of twenty-four, we ended with one fifteen, four ninety-four. If you use a hundred and thirteen, one eighty-eight from that, you're starting in twenty-twenty-six with two thousand dollars. And right away in January, you have a hundred and nine thousand that you pay for your contract, um, to Apco International. You won't have money for that, you won't even have enough when the payment comes in, because that's averaging about twenty, twenty to twenty-two thousand a month. Um, you have about fifty thousand a month in utilities that you pay. You have a New World contract where it's almost thirty-six thousand that you pay once a year. The Niece contract, nine thousand, six fifty-three. You have a Penguin Management for nineteen hundred and fifty, Allied Tech, thirty-two hundred and fifty. And then your debt is a hundred and two thousand at this point, but that's a variable interest rate. So when that loan was taken out, it was at three point three six, and currently it's at eight point three six. And you're at the mercy of whatever the rate is per year, which is killing you. And that loan goes through twenty-three-two, so that debt's not gonna go away. Um, these costs that I give in your contract costs that you have to have to run your radios and your dispatch equipment, so those costs can't go away. So, uh, just looking at it, I mean, twenty-twenty-six, you're not gonna have enough money to operate. And so I don't know where we go from here, but I just, I wanted to make sure you guys have this information.
Sorry, I'm Kim Zim, I'm the new city manager of Junction City. No offense, but you're using a lot of pronouns, like "you." Are you talking about the board, the nine-one-one board?
Because we don't really have any jurisdiction over it. The board functions independently, separate from us, but the financials are ran through the county, so I apologize for that, I shouldn't have...
No, no, you're fine. I just can't figure out why, of all the cities I manage, nine-one-one isn't strictly controlled by county.
You're talking about everybody, you're talking about everything, not just the...
Only nine-one-one dispatches, it's never been controlled by the county. I can't understand why it's not controlled by the county here.
Uh, I...
I was waiting for everybody in this room's time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're determined for change. Now, who, who would be dumb enough to approve a loan at a variable interest rate? That's stupid. Um, but we can probably go back out once we figure out who the "you" next is gonna be to charge the board, it's county or us. I'd go back out and refinance that thing at a fixed rate.
That's, that's one of the suggestions I was gonna have, because I, I don't know why, why was it taken out as, as a variable loan? Because I mean...
Well, I'll say, uh, when it was brought up, uh, I don't think it was told to us that it was a variable loan. Um, that's my fault for not asking on my part. Um, I assumed that we wouldn't do anything like that, that it would be fixed when, uh, they talked about the interest rate. Uh, so I was shocked to find out later that it was a variable.
Yeah.
Obviously, that is something that we need to look at, whether we do a different loan or we have to use some funds from this other account.
I don't know if it can be.
No, it, it can be.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think that it could be, depending on what, um...
Betsy, Betsy has some input on that, if you wanna share your...
Well, I mean, I think that, I, I think the nine-one-one board, like we talked about, is its own entity, and I, I think you'd be, um, I, I think it'd be important for you guys to hire some counsel. Um, because when I look through those A G opinions, it seems like there might be some things to explore. Um, and I also think that, uh, there's gonna be that new nine-one-one coordinating council, and I think there might be some money opportunities through that that look like they might be available. So I, I, I just think you guys should explore your options. I know that Mr. Henry's helped you guys in the past, and I reached out to him and asked him, and he said, well, he didn't feel like he was actually counsel, that he felt like he was only hired for some specific things. So, um, that, you know, whoever you guys wanna use, I think it'd be important to kinda do a deep dive into those old A G opinions and that, uh, Fund Fifty-Six is, I think, what it's called.
What, what, give me a little bit of history, because I know this current agreement is in twenty-twenty. Was it different prior to twenty-twenty as far as the agreement, uh, between the entities for the nine-one-one?
Well, no, because, well, who was it? Uh, Bill Depish is the one that, that started the nine-one-one. Uh, and back then, to be honest, we had no law enforcement on it. It was strictly civilians on that whole panel. We would have the police station come over, we would have the county come over, ask us for things. Calvin Potber was our, our guy that we'd say, "Can we do this, can we do that?" So I mean, but we now, I mean, it's pretty much all law enforcement or everybody that runs every agent on it now besides two people, so...
My concern is that anytime, I mean, the, the collections are tax money. I mean, it's called a, a fee that they're doing, but it's, it's public money. And there, you are the only elected mayor or councilperson on that board. Um, I know there is the fire department, the police department, the sheriff is usually on there, but there's, I feel that there should be a commissioner from each entity on there, because we're making decisions and I, I, I don't know whose idea it was to get a variable loan, but I agree, that was very foolish. Um, I mean, I, I'm not a finance person, but there is no benefit if we're, if you're taking out a long-term loan for it to be variable, because you never know, you can't budget on that. And the fact that it's went up from three to fi, or three to eight, I mean, that's huge. Um, I, there's gotta be a way that, that, and I also, I also have an issue that you guys are the only ones that can decide whether the board, you as the board members are the only ones that could decide to disband that. I feel elected officials, the city and the county, the Milford and Grandview, why would we give up that, why would we give that power of, I, I don't wanna call it power, but the authority if something like this is going on?
Well, honestly, I think where we ran out of the rabbit hole is these radios that we were told we have to have.
We do have, we did have to have those, the eight-hundred radios.
I don't know if you're aware, we're still, we're still not there.
I know.
We have to have a tower put in so these guys can go into a building and hear each other on their radios.
And, and that's where I think that we should've had our finance, both city, county, you guys, if you have a finance person, to get there, because there are things that Tammy was involved in, the one, the one she worked at Riley County, and they had to buy, they got everybody involved. They had every entity, their public works, um, because they all use radios, we all use radios. And not only that, they obtained their, they obtained towers, and they made it to where there was enough to where they could rent out to other entities to use those towers to supplement the nine-one-one fund. I just, I just feel like we were very, uh, narrow-minded when we, you know, with blinders on, "Okay, we need to just do this for law enforcement and fire," when we could've been looking at emergency management, um, public works on both, all three entities. Um, you know, even you guys in Milford too, I mean, we could've all been together. And maybe that is something we can look at, um, to where we can try to supplement that. But, you know, I, we're not here to, to batter anybody. We just wanna look and think outside the box and try to solve this issue, because it is an issue that we're not gonna have enough money. Or you guys are not, you as the board are not gonna have enough money.
How mu, how much money do, does the state, how much money do we get back off those fees versus how much we pay out per month on loan?
Per loan?
I think it's...
So we get about twenty, twenty to twenty-two thousand a month, and that loan payment is eighty-five hundred right now. And when they started that, it was sixty-nine hundred, so that's how much it went up with this variable rate.
And I think it's a ten-year loan, if I'm not mistaken.
Twenty-three-two, yeah, twenty, twenty-two, thirty-two.
So, if we're talking twenty-two, we're taking in and nine, let's say, is going out, there should still be money in there.
Yeah, but there's a lot of other costs, that's what I said at the beginning. They have a bunch of contracts that they have that help support the dispatch equipment and the radios that they have to pay annually.
I mean, we just put a brand-new air conditioning unit, we have to do it. I mean, it's just never ending it over there, I mean...
Yeah, in twenty-four, they had thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty in maintenance costs for those kinds of things.
And I, I, you know, I read the minutes that, for that, and, and there were concerns, because I know the, the fire chief and the police chief voted against you guys taking this loan out because of this. Because they saw the writing on the wall.
Even if you got rid of the debt, you're still, I mean, right now, um, a hundred, a hundred and thirteen thousand, even if the debt was gone, that's a hundred and two, you would just barely be treading water, and that would all depend on what happens with maintenance and replacement costs, because those radios become obsolete after so many years, so you have to replace radios. And that's something else, when you look at replacing the radios instead of the nine-one-one, paying for that, probably the outside entities need to have a, a part in that cost. Whereas it was all encompassed within this plan the first time around. So ARCA funds paid for a large part of it, about two-point-seven million. And then this loan for seven hundred thousand is what was used for the remainder of the project.
Yeah, because I think we, we bought these radios, and they went in a patrol car or anything, set over here and shed for a year and a half. They're out of its warning before we even got to use it, if I'm not mistaken.
Because we didn't have dispatch help.
It's, this has been a rabbit hole on these radios.
It has, and I think a lot of it has to do with communication with everybody and, and, um, and there were members on that board that did not wanna listen to anybody, um...
I think the biggest thing was, and Gary, you, you were here fighting kinda against it, but, um, the previous fire chief from the city, it was, now it's his baby, he wanted those radios, yeah. There was a lot of...
Well, we needed those radios. I mean, the eight-hundred was needed, it wasn't, that wasn't a want, that was a need, um...
But Gary had the option of going also with Riley County, if I remember.
There was discussions for Riley County about tagging on to their system, but, uh, our chief at the time, uh, that he wanted Motorola, he was going system and stuff. Two are being listened to.
Riley County and Sheriff's nine-one-one. I've had you let together.
That's what basically, we got overruled on that.
Got me in the previous city manager too.
That was a lot of...
Yes.
Yeah, Gary. I think you're all spot on on this, and I think the numbers are exactly where they need to be, of what, exactly what you're saying. But I don't think moving forward is gonna focus on what happened in the past. We already know some things happened in the past, and this, just from what I've been hearing and what I've read already. You're already wearing two shirts. I think what we need to focus on is finding out the leadership establishment moving forward of how the nine-one-one is gonna work. Because I think the financial piece with the financial directors and experts we have to maintain it until we get that in place. And then you can go through a piecemeal step by step, how you wanna fix a problem moving forward with a new leadership or a new set of direction in place. Does that make sense?
Yes. Which is, I mean, that's exactly why I wanted to have this...
Because if you don't change anything now, it's not gonna get fixed.
It's not, we have to do something.
You've already identified the loan issues, you can refinance. You've already identified a bunch of issues to fix, and they can be fixed. It's a question of who is gonna be the leadership venue to make that happen. And you already got mine, it should be the county, just saying, the county, because it's nine-one-one for the county.
And I think the reason why is because the dispatch center is in the police department.
Yeah, I get that.
And so I, I think that's, I, I, I see what you're saying, but I also, you know, because Junction City is the largest city in the, in this, in the county, and, um, they're the ones that handle most calls, um, I...
But even my last two cities, the biggest city is the one that didn't run, it was still the county.
Well, usually dispatch is like totally, not even in the police department or the sheriff.
Correct, it's separate, dispatch facility run by the county, G M S.
Yeah.
Well, I still think that all, all enforcement, fire department need to be on the board. And quite frankly, I... And quite frankly, I I think the emergency management needs to be on the board. So with that said, I, that would be my first start.
I definitely think a finance person needs to be on the board.
Well, you can't, you can look at.
Maybe it needs to be an advisory board instead of.
Yeah, and I think that it does need to be an advisory board.
Maybe this needs to be an advisory.
They should have governor, by commissioners, with an advisory board.
I agree with that.
That's the way it's usually set up.
They're all, and it has to be.
Governor, commissioners, and an advisory board.
And I'm not saying this is the, this is the tops, but this is my experience is at Riley County, the dispatch was at RCPD. But the county oversaw all the dollars spent, and they had an advisory board. So they got input on what they requested or recommended, but the governing body still had the ultimate authority for every dollar spent.
Well, I would not have approved a variable loan.
We're in the process of moving number two to the municipal building too. I didn't, I don't know if I told you that or not.
The number two what?
Fire station doesn't want it out there anymore. Now we're going to move it over to the municipal building.
Our re- our backup, why would you move that so close to the main one? That was just like when Gary wanted to put the emergency um, operations center downstairs. We are all in the same area. It should be away from the main dispatch center in case there's a tornado or something else. Who knows these days? I I I don't know why we would move that so close to.
We're out of, we're running out of room up there.
I understand. I'm not saying it has to be out there, but I.
We could pick anywhere. I just.
I mean, what about, what about the the substation? That that would make more sense to have it at the substation at, by the lake. Because it's totally different. We're, I'm not saying that it has to be there. I just don't think it should be moved right close to the main dispatch center.
The substation already houses one dispatch center and the mobile command unit.
Well, the mobile command unit, yes, but I I think you would probably need a little bit more than just the mobile command unit, don't you think?
They don't dispatch everything directly from the command unit, so.
But that's letting you know that rabbit hole, it just seems like.
Yeah.
This is just, hey, it wasn't, ten years ago, we had five hundred thousand dollars in the account and two hundred and seventy-five in the other account, and everything ran smooth.
Gary, on the, if I'm not, I'm trying to remember, but I think the whole thing with public works and everything else is I don't think the state will allow public works on the eight hundred system, will they?
Anybody go on, uh, the state's got uh, school districts on them for the buses and stuff too.
And that might be another source of revenue is getting with them. And and maybe if we do a a a new tower, you know, to be able to sell that area. Because it would be cheaper for them to do it too, and then supplement the nine one one with that. I mean, those are just things we, I think we need to look at.
But my, my no problem, I guess.
But when they sent out the grant funding notification, we only had two weeks, and we didn't have any um, quotes or anything to give them to write it up, so we didn't have enough time to put in that tower.
To our last meeting, uh, we was supposed to be looking at a tower out on Jagil, I mean, Busters. I think that was the name that was somewhere around.
We were at Western Tower.
That's, yeah.
Is there's already a tower there or just using the?
We want to know if we can go on.
We, we put our radio, but the problem is on the eight hundred, we've got up at the radio water tower right now on Ash Street, we've got a six-pack. Which means five different units can be talking at one time. We bring the school district in, that's going to double our size, that kind of stuff. So that's why we're looking at the second tower, not just for the coverage, but also allows additional users. So it would be a twelve-pack or higher than that, and a six-pack, so you'd have more user, especially since we're on the state system, so. There's more money there, but we're looking for the possibility of getting a used one from another county. Upgrading all their stuff.
Well, I d- I definitely think you need to be involved in the nine one one committee because you have access to all that information.
Well, it's no different, Cheryl, we have to ask her everything at the dispatch, every meeting she's there, but.
She's not a voting man?
No.
Yeah. I I think we need to relook at at the structure of the nine one one board. I I truly do. I I don't feel that that, you guys are the only ones that can dissolve your own board. I I I just don't think that that's.
So here's, here'd be my suggestion, um, and the advisory part of it, that is fine. The problem was, well, we need to get two more people on there right now. And then you guys can come up with recommendations back to the county. Um, but at some point, the city's got to be involved too, because like Trish said, dispatch is in PD. And so then, that throws a wrench into things. But I agree to move forward. Get the board backup, I mean, established, and have you guys, me, go through your process of reorganizing, whatever, and then you guys kind of hammer out what you think. And then bring it back to us and maybe the city, but when it comes down to, we can't just have a joint meeting with the city commission to decide, you know, what we're going to do. Um, I have no problem with Tammy being the administrative financial officer for the board. That's fine. But I agree with you, Kim, that, uh, you know, we can't look in our, we got to look forward.
I reach out to the other county commissioners and find out what their documents look like concerning how they run it for their county. I know Riley County has it controlled by the county. I contact them and say, hey, you want to see your contract that you got here? How you doing?
Tammy was involved in all of that, so she probably even knows better than.
Russell City's.
I mean, the city's involvement statute.
Well, just Russell City would be the contact.
Yeah, the county statutes that the each city and county provide. So I mean, I I think that it was set up that way by virtue of the statutes, it's fifty-three eighty. That the governing body of each city and county shall provide or contract for the twenty-four-hour speed of nine one one calls for all service areas within the jurisdiction of the city or county.
You, you, I think we have two things there. One is is the provision of the service. Then the other part is is the nine one one funds, which are separate. But my understanding, I do believe the nine one one coordinate cap council, the credit code room, does see Junction City as the PSAP for Gary County. Um, and the currently city employees, however, do I know we have two things going on, so I know other entities do send in some monies for the provision of services to to the city. Uh, of Junction City this time, I don't want to just say the city, I I don't want to say that to Milford or Grandview. But yeah, I think a part of this, kind of figuring out what it is, because we're looking at nine one one board, and it's money is going into the red. Since all four entities join into that, do we need something or want something that says, hey, we'll share in the expenses? If they go over what's there. And so we just need to make sure we follow with that. And I know, this is everyone, I'll make sure to share this with our city commission. And that way they're aware of it, and and we just kind of kept up to it. Since you're discussing it, we'll discuss it, and that way we can try to figure out something. I think there are a lot of different possibilities, just looking at it. We could restructure it. We could reappoint, but say, this is what we're looking for in members. We could also dissolve it and go forward, um, do it as all the.
Sure. And I mean, and I feel that if it is, you know, to where each entity is going to have to cover the costs, then it should not be the governing board with non-elected um, people on it. It should be an advisory board. And then us make the decisions on what the monies are going to be that we're going to spend to supplement it. I mean, that's just my opinion, because we're, if we're the ones responsible for making up the funds, then we should be the ones responsible for making the decisions on those.
Yeah, and I haven't really pointed any fingers or anything.
No, 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 I know.
Misses go up.
No, and that's why I wanted to talk, because I I don't know if anybody even realized that, yeah, we're going to run out of money eventually.
Yeah, we can make it work. I know we can.
Well, and I don't think it's important.
I know, the the funding for uh, all these public service insurance points has remained pretty flat.
Yeah.
And so we're not, I don't think, unique that we're like, well, there's not enough money to cover what we need to cover. I think that's.
Well, I think that's where, when Tammy brought that up, was they looked for ways to supplement, because they would have ran out of money as well if they weren't doing that.
Which we, to be honest, that last meeting we had, we knew that check of twenty thousand was coming in, but.
Sure.
They said, hey, we've got a payment of a hundred thousand dollars coming in. We were hoping that got in before that. That's how tight we are on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was a twenty thousand dollar check, if I remember right.
So where do we go from here?
Well, like I said earlier, I, for the time being, I'd like to, to store our appointments. And I would like the new sheriff to be on there, and I'd like Gary to be on there to fill those two vacancies.
Where you go from here is the board has to meet. The board has to meet, discuss what happened in here today, and then go from there.
Well, there, the problem with that, sir, is there isn't a board. There's only two people on the board right now. Because every January, they have to elect their people on that board. The city has to elect their people on that.
And that's what Keith's doing, is making a motion to put the two people on there, so you guys have.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I just want to be aware of that.
Yeah.
That could be in your board.
I agree with you.
Putting your people on there.
And Gary, are you good? Yeah, I'd make that motion to get this ball rolling.
I'll second that.
You don't feel like you should put a, a finance person on this board?
Well, first of all, she's got to live in Gary County.
How?
She doesn't live in Gary County, but a statute, she has to live by her.
Well, I didn't mean her, but a finance person on the board. It was always nice to have Calvin.
Jamel lives here.
So the county gets three members.
Yes.
So you guys just need to figure out that you're three members.
Yeah.
Well, we've already got, and we got John Moyer, so.
So we only need, we have two.
Two vacancies right now. So I got a motion in a second for Sheriff Beckman and Mr. Burgess, um, to fill our two vacancies. And then, I don't know, you said that the city hasn't appointed yours yet?
Well, that, January, we have our, we call, I call it real life, but yeah, January is when we appoint secretary and everybody, but we haven't presented to our city side yet. Uh, the fire and the police yet. No, we'll see who it is, and then we'll go to the city, and we'd like to have this person sit on this board on the nine one one.
February, February?
February twelfth, we meet the board.
Oh, okay.
The board chief?
The nine one one board.
Oh, you do?
You do.
Mm-hmm.
We meet every month, yeah.
So second was there every month attending, attending?
So I have a motion in a second. Any turn of discussion? Kathy, do you have anything?
No.
If not, all the fairer say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And um, then you, from the city standpoint, you can point yours and try to get movement.
I'd definitely work it, sir.
Okay. And I agree with you. I mean, this can all be worked out. It's just finding that path.
Uh, I got one question. You, you put those two on, but you didn't put John off, or you got rid of John and put the finance person in?
No, John, John is not.
His term went up.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Every year, January, it's a.
No, they just said that we only had two, oh, because two people were stepping down.
Yeah.
Okay.
John will have to be, can they, no different, I mean, we're on a leash like this, we don't, you know.
Well.
I'm just saying, though, you're going to have to, I didn't know if that's what you were going to wait to put a finance person in.
Oh, no, I think for now. Because John, he's like you, he's been on there forever. He's, he's very up to speed with it. I mean, to start, leave him, yeah, I better amend my motion then to, for all three. So that would be for John, Sheriff Beckman, Mr. Burgess. And then here's my, I've read, um, I think our financial director would be more than willing to come to your meetings, like what you were talking about with Mr. Popper. I, Tammy, you'd be fine with that, wouldn't you?
We, we have two spots. None of them might commit to Jamel to be the finance guy. I have no problem with that, because he's also the deputy city manager.
Sure.
So if you didn't want to take one of your spots to be a financial guy, I could happily appoint Jamel. When it comes time, I recommend, recommend it to the commissioners, and Jamel would be the rep for us.
But then you would have one of the, either the fire or the police chief, and I'd be on that. Okay.
That's fine.
Well, and the other thing we can do is I know, at least Mr. Burgess used to be, I think, ex officio. Like, he'd still show up even though he wasn't on a voting.
No, that, and that happens a lot, because she's there every meeting.
And so I think with, with Ms. Riley being there, um, Mr. Wilcox or myself, or, and I, I don't want to speak with county people, but we, we could also be there. Because we still have all the best interest in how this comes out. And we understand that some entities at the same time, they have their own members that we appoint there that can still be like, hey, you know, hey, Brendan, what's going on? Or Ms. Robinson and Ms. Edwards or whatever. But it's that way we have an idea of kind, that way when they have things, they can, they can bounce off and say, is there a law for this? Is there finance? Or what makes sense here? Um, and so I know we can make ourselves available for that, to be there. Um, that way you at least have somebody with that background.
Yes, I agree.
And then, like I said, I don't need both chiefs on there. I can, none of Russell Portland wants to be on there, and then.
My money's on her.
Okay, so I'm in my motion to include Mr. Moyer for our three appointments.
All right, second.
Okay. All those are fair, is that right?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah, thanks for the invitation, ladies.
Looking forward to working with you, Mr. Henry.
Yeah, you got a few things. We may have to work on that.
Yep.
Well, I think if you presented it, if it was like two minutes, two things, you know, a meeting later, I think, I think, you know, you did it, and then we realized that we didn't have. I mean, that's, I mean, if it was like a meeting later, you would have done it, you would have just said, yeah.
I have a good thought. I have just.
Yeah, the idea, I thought that it was, I didn't realize this had been your first idea. I know, just to be. Well, I think it needs to be that the city, they're in the county, just because they're, yeah, because I just think they understand that, you know. They understand, but it's.
That's right. That's right.
I mean, that's right. She can't hear because. I've been sitting there too long. I just have a question for you. It's not really public, um, since you, since you have the joint, uh, we are enjoying, uh, I'm going to go down and testify on Wednesday and Thursday. Yep, and I talked to John, he called me that night when you guys were down there for that joint meeting.
You're going to have to be a little color.
So, and Jay Hall was supposed to be doing his presentation, and I have.
And Jay Hall was supposed to be doing his presentation and I haven't had a chance. You know, I would be taking you down there and I don't know whether you guys are even gonna be having. But I mean, um, providing with testimony. How's it going? But we need numbers as individuals also, not just the county itself. It needs to be, you know, something saying, you know, that you want, you know, just to support the buildings, that's all that's left. And just so you get your name on the tab because that's what they did the last time you see a testimony or any type of, okay. How many per counties, how many open it. And that's how the kind of judges, you guys, you know, when you're really three miles zone. My other question is, was since you have your kind of different, you said with the joint planning, we don't have it anymore. It's separate. So who supervises what goes on in the three mile zone? Who actually does the inspections? Who does the fee collection? Is it actually city, county that gets the funds?
I mean.
Okay, that's what I've heard in other areas that they say in the three mile zone, since it's joint planning and zoning, that any of the building fees or things like that in that three mile zone then go to the, so. So it goes to county. Oh, well. It has, yes, I'm going down with one team, uh, Thursday, and I got approval, if they get it to me by, um, tomorrow sometime. But we do, like I said, some. Um, they're not just getting the very itself to that, or for, they're, they're gonna learn to see if they have any, if they were having. That's what I'm trying to do, that's what I was trying to get.
Okay, uh, we discussed title companies, um. A couple of weeks ago, about collaborative title services and, uh, JCAT had both, uh, submitted an equal bid of one twenty-five. You guys have some follow-up questions, um, regarding the timeline to complete the title or if they have performed a county tax sale? And if they have sufficient staff? And they both answered, um, those questions, uh. Let's see, uh, Collaborative Title thought that they could accomplish, um, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty searches with the certificate of title ownership in about four weeks. Um, and they could, uh, try to get it sooner, but they wanna make sure that everything's correct. Um, so they have met, they have been involved in residential, commercial foreclosure and county tax sale previously. And they said that they have, uh, more than one location, so if they need to provide additional staff, they could, um, if they needed something quick. Um, JCAT, um, also responded, um. JCAT said, um, he doesn't have a specific timeline, um, but that they will get them done in a timely manner. And, uh, they'll, they'll return your reports as they're completed. Um, he says he had worked on, uh, every tax sale for the last twenty years, um, and that they do have sufficient staff, um. And he pointed out that they were locally owned. So those were their responses, um. I worked a lot on the tax list. I spent most of last week on it, um. There's a couple more properties I'm gonna check on, but, um, we have gotten quite a few of them off of us, so I think it'll be less than a hundred and fifteen for sure. Um, probably a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty by the amount of payments we've received. So. I've never done a tax sale before, so I can't give, uh, I, I, I can't recommend either company more than the other, cause I've never worked with any of them on a tax. And it was the same money on both of them.
Sherry, do you have any preference? Well, they both have experience.
I, yeah, I don't know. It's a toss-up. When I looked at both of them, um. I know I. And I know it wasn't the perfect thing, but I'd mention about maybe splitting them, you know.
I think that would.
That would, I don't, I don't think that would be right.
I'll make a motion that we go as collaborative.
Is there a reason you want that over the other?
I, I thought her response was, um, very detailed and, um, upbeat and, uh, she was excited about doing it. That's why I chose that.
I don't, I don't have a problem with this.
See, and I haven't experienced with, uh, the other, I know, um, you know, they were easy to work with and they did get it done in a timely manner. And so I don't have the history about the other, that's why I was asking, but yeah, I, I.
Okay, well, somebody needs mokin if they're not gonna second my motion.
I would be willing to second your motion.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I have a motion and a second. I'll say the name again.
Collaborative.
Collaborative for the title company for working on our tax sale. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So you'll reach out to them, that's it.
Yes, sir. You ready for our, our staff meeting?
Yeah, I'm gonna go down.
All right.